Stream and saved for people to watch at a later time if they so wish on our YouTube channel. At this time, I would, do we have students doing our land acknowledgement? Yes, I will ask you guys to come up to the front. And these are Central Middle students, if you would introduce yourself and call us your name and grade. Prior to the land acknowledgement, that would be greatly appreciated.
Hi, I'm Anaya, I'm a day trip.
I'm Elizabeth.
I'm Timmy.
I'm Malcolm, I'm an eighth grade.
I'm Shell, I'm a ninth grade.
Today, we were invited here to read the land acknowledgement. And we thank the board members for giving us the opportunity to perform this act of reconciliation. You may descend, if you're able to, on your way. Imagine you're being thirteen and the sights and the sound of this land many years ago. Reverent and ever changing, overflowed with life and rich culture. We acknowledge the land, the land's caretakers who have respected it and those whose hands cared for it. Insurance provided us with a place to call home. We are here to acknowledge and recognize the ancestral land on which we stand. To the north of the Red Deer River, this is the ancestral home and territory of Benegia, commonly known as Cree, Dene, Ntsetapi, commonly known as Blackfoot, Salto, Dakota Sioux, as well as the Métis. To the south of the Red Deer River, we acknowledge Treaty Seven Territory. This land is the ancestral home and territory of the Métis-Battle Confederacy, Gaijinai, Ekani, Sussexa, as well as the Sutana First Nation and St. John's Dakota First Nation.
These lands are the traditional territories of the First Nations, Métis, and Indianer people who have a deep connection with the land and have lived here for generations. Despite the challenges they faced, they persist in protecting their culture and traditions.
As we stand in the lands of Treaty Six and Treaty Seven, let us all acknowledge and appreciate the hard work they put into every moment of their lives to preserve the land and make it the ideal place for them, as well as for us to reside on. We continue to live on the land they once called home. So let us work just as hard and strive to continue maintaining the land for us and for all future generations. By acknowledging the traditional land on which we stand, we take a small yet significant step in the act of reconciliation. This act of gratitude honors the people who have come before us and the land they inhabited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would ask everyone to please stand for the saying of our national anthem of Canada. And I would like to invite student Emma Van...
Perfect.
Perfect. And can we tell us what school you are from and grade, please?
I am from Lindsay, Terreba, and I am in grade eleven. Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot's love in all of us command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true North, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
All right, trustee, in front of you, you will have your agenda for today's meeting. And the minutes from our public May fourteen meeting, is there any admissions, changes, errors? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion. trustee Waters, thank you, all those in favor? In front of you, you have an agenda. I will make the addition of ten point one, classified staff remuneration. Sliding everything in the agenda down one. Are there any other admissions changes? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion. Vice Chair McCully?
So move with the additions.
Thank you very much. All those in favor? All right, so we have full room, as everyone can see. And we're going to do this a little bit differently than we normally do because of the number of individuals we have joining us. So what we normally do is we break at the end of every recognition we do and we go out and do pictures. Today, we're not going to do that, we're going to do all of the recognition. And then at the end, we're going to hand out the certificates and go into the lobby and do pictures at that time. So with that being said, I will move on in our agenda to nine point one, ASBA Zone Four, Edwin Parr nominee. Deputy Dan Martin.
Thank you very much, Chairman Kevin. Just to begin, as I kicked off here today, looking at the top of our agenda, and tell us our Red Deer Public Schools' mission and vision. And our mission is striving for excellence by inspiring learning and nurturing hope in every student. So I think it's super cool here today that we're going to have six different groups of people or individuals nominated that are both those students that were hoping to do inspired learning and the excellent employees that are division that are making that inspiration happen. And so twenty-six individual people that could be recognized here today. And we're going to kick it off. I'm going to ask both Sandra Bevan and Krien Forsbisson to introduce and say a few words about Red Deer Public Schools' nominee for our Zone Four, Edwin Parr, to bring excellence and future teaching onward. So I would invite you to speak about Kelsey and Krien's here somewhere.
Do you want to... I'm going to just turn it over to you. Okay. Many of you will know the name Lawler. If you have been in the district for very long, because both Kelsey's mom and dad, Twain and Kathy, were long time teachers at Lindsay, Terreba. But I want to let you know right now that Kelsey Lawler is not being recognized today because of her parents' accomplishments. She is being recognized today because of her incredible talents as first year teacher. I've been in the district for a lot of years. And there are very few teachers that in their first year can manage a class of thirty-six, grade five students, and engage all of them, and not just engage them, but connect with them so strongly that kids want to come to school every single day. Thirty-six students from a wide spectrum of learning needs. And you would think that Kelsey would have kids out in the hallway often, and she needs to settle them down. And Kelsey manages students and all of their needs all day long. Not only does she teach thirty-six, grade five students, she also teaches grade five, or grade six phys ed, grade seven phys ed, grade eight phys ed. Anybody that teaches middle school knows how tricky it can be to engage some of those middle school kids in all of the various activities or locations. And she manages that with the breeze. And she's just a highly tuned athlete as well. She's represented Canada, she's represented our province, our city. I agree, her levels of competition, she could have done anything she wanted. And yet, she is getting back to our school and our community in so many different ways. She is an incredible teacher, and she's very deserving. I'm the Edwin Parr nominee for Red Deer Public. And so thank you for recognizing her, putting the hand up that she is. We'll just tack a few comments on to what Mrs. Bevan has already mentioned. And just to say once again, what an immense amount of pride that we have as a division to have Kelsey Lawler as our nominee for the Edwin Parr Award. It is a very prestigious nomination for first year teachers in the province of Alberta. And she really embodies everything that is part of that award and that nomination process. She is an exceptional first year teacher. And her impact on students and the school community has been truly inspiring to watch this year. As Sandra mentioned, she's teaching grade five, she's teaching phys ed. And in every role that she has in the school, she's really, really prioritizing those inclusive, high engagement spaces where all students are driving in her classroom. It's a complex and diverse learning environment, but she's demonstrated remarkable skill, heart, and innovation in her teaching practice. Her background, as was mentioned, is a world-class athlete, I think, has really poised her to bring resilience, leadership, and a real growth mindset to her teaching. Her classroom is a place where students feel safe, valued, and capable. She builds deep relationships with families and students. And her thoughtful, creative approaches like integrating Indigenous perspectives, project-based learning, and inclusive physical education have really set a new bar for excellence. For any teacher, Kelsey's accomplishments would be commendable. And for a first year teacher, they are truly extraordinary. So Kelsey, you have really embodied the heart and excellence that we strive for here at Red Deer Public. We're so proud to have nominated you for this award. Congratulations.
Chelsea, would you like to say a word?
Sure. Thank you both, Sandra and Krien, for the nomination. Teaching has always been something that I knew I wanted to, but I didn't know how it would impact my students would have on me until I actually had a chance to be in the classroom. And being at a school like Glenville, we have students from lots of diverse backgrounds. And it's such a cool experience to be a safe adult and to be a safe space for them. So I've really enjoyed that this year. And I also want to thank the Red Deer Public School Board and the Board of Trustees just for being so supportive of first year teachers and for really hearing us and making sure that our needs are met as well. So, thank you.
At this time, I would open up the floor to the Board of Trustees. Vice Chair McCully?
Thank you very much. Um, Kelsey? It was such an honor to be part of the Red Deer Public woo-hoo crew at the Edwin Parr Awards. I thought you should have won. But thank you for sharing your story and thank you for sharing everything that is in your heart when it comes to students. And we're glad you're here, please stay here as long as you like.
On behalf of the board, Kelsey, thank you so very much for everything that you have done and continue to do. I know that you have had a very interesting upbringing. And as mentioned, who your parents are, this did not happen because of who your parents are. This happened because of your dedication, being a first year teacher with Red Deer Public School Division. Thank you so, so very much. It is no small feat to teach and ultimately, I would say, corral thirty-six, grade five students. Grade five is about ten years old, which is a very interesting age in itself. So thank you so very much on behalf of Red Deer Public School Division and our board for everything you've done. This nomination was very well deserved.
Just to put it along, Kelsey, I'm not sure where you might be at first if receiving recognition from the board as a student. You know, winning athletic awards, volleyball championship, track and field, and then come back and get one as a teacher. So I don't know whether it's more stressful. I don't think you have to talk as a student.
I didn't have to talk.
Next, I'm really excited to have Vice Principal of Central Middle School Jeff Archer speak about one of our physical education teachers extraordinary in Red Deer Public Schools. Scott Luck was one of seven recipients across Canada for the National Award for Teaching Excellence in Physical and Health Education. So Jeff, take it away to Scott.
Yeah, so no way to beat to describing Scott. But as Dan had said, the award does go out to excellence in teaching, phys ed, health, and education. Honors Canadian teachers at the elementary, middle, or secondary levels who have an exceptional ability to motivate students to engage meaningfully in their journey through physical and/or health literacy with thoughtful and inspiring teaching practices in pedagogy, exemplifying high-quality physical and/or health education in Canada. And so Scott is super deserving of this award. He is a highly respected staff member at Central. He's been there for a long time. He does a great job. He's genuinely invested in the success of all the students at our school. We have, as you guys do at Glenville, a highly diverse population that require different needs. Scott, on top of being a father of five, somehow finds time to do our extracurriculars and puts in his time there. He's highly empathetic with all students. He also has high standards students, so he expects the best out of all the kids. And he is an expert in phys ed and health. And so one of the ways that sticks out to me is just how he, when we do our track day, he always makes sure that our student, our flying student Bryn is always involved and always is able to participate in all of the activities that she needs to. And he's just a fantastic guy to have in our building. So, thank you, Scott. Around two twenty in the four hundred.
And Scott, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, absolutely. I actually brought the plaque that I received there. Yeah, absolutely. When I've been talking to people about receiving this award, I've always said that I'm humbled and honored to be considered in terms of the word excellence. As I look around here, I've got former students that are being recognized here too, and current students being recognized here as well. So that's a huge honor to be with them, receiving recognition. So, thank you.
Thank you. I will open up the floor at this time to trustees. trustee Summers?
I would just like to say thank you so much. As a parent, kind of watching you through those three years, I really took note of how inclusive you are and that you make an effort. Every time I saw you, you made an effort to look for those students and choose them and fill them in. So thanks so much.
Vice Chair McCully? Thank you as well, Scott. Having both you and Kelsey in the same room, I'm thinking you two could work together and maybe package some kind of deal and say, this will work. Write a book, make a podcast, you know, put Red Deer Public at the top. We are going to have some awesome middle school students, you know, getting full of energy and healthy living practices. So thank you, thank you, Scott.
On behalf of the board, Scott, I just want to say thank you so very much for everything that you do for Red Deer Public School Division. As a parent, I know how impactful you were to my daughter. And I really appreciate everything you do. I'm very passionate with the correlation between physical activity and health and mental wellness. So thank you very much for the excellence that you exude in everything that you do at Central Middle School. Thank you.
Scott, Jeff mentioned this earlier, but it admits that my five kids are... A memory I have was watching you coach middle school volleyball and looking at the seats beside me and seeing like two of your triplets with shoes that were on the wrong feet, pointed the wrong way. And your wife just telling me, I'm just happy to get them out of the house. Shoes are even on, so probably your wife played a big get wrong in this as well. Next, really proud and excited to invite Principal of Chief Doc Brayden Kilpatrick to introduce Brayden Cheyenne. Earlier this year, Brayden received the Integrated School Support Program Chief Youth Courage Award. So we'll have Brayden speak a bit about Brayden and you.
Thank you. To introduce Brayden's achievement, I'd like to read a bit and echo the sentiment in the letter received from Chief Constable Mark Dufell, the Calgary Police Service, and Anita Croft, or Chair of the Calgary Police Youth Foundation. We are ready to extend our heartfelt congratulations to you on being selected a recipient, a recipient of the prestigious Integrated School Support Program Chief Youth Courage Award presented by the Calgary Police Youth Foundation. This recognition is a reflection of your remarkable courage, leadership, and unwavering perseverance, all of which have the lasting impact on your community and those around you. Your dedication and commitment to make a positive difference are truly inspiring. The qualities that you've demonstrated in the face of challenges and adversity are the essence of what makes a true leader. Your example is a beacon for others, showing that one can rise above, inspire others, and lead with integrity and straight plan. It is not every day that someone is chosen for such a prestigious honor. You should be incredibly proud of your hard work, determination, and resilience that have brought you to this moment. Your actions speak volumes, and it is clear that you continue to lead, inspiring the future. Once again, congratulations on this well-deserved achievement. We have no doubt that you'll continue to excel and set an example for others to follow. Best wishes for continued success, and you keep shining as a leader for years to come. So as part of this role, Brayden has, will be expected to serve as a program ambassador. So in this capacity, he'll assist with community activities aimed at raising awareness about child abuse crime prevention, education intervention programs. Involved in things including attending events such as the launch of the calendar campaign, stewardship events, and participating in program video filming and other activities. So Amy Jo Hapson was our counselor who nominated Brayden and did all the work to... Well, all she had to do was write about all the good things that Brayden did. So she wasn't able to attend today, so it was her reading message she wanted me to say. Brayden, it's with my deepest sadness that I cannot be there with you today to be recognized by the school board for an entire school division that is so very proud of you. Brayden, your high expectations for your future are nothing short of achievable. Please keep enjoying all the sports that you inspire your character and perseverance. And I have no hesitation that one day you will dream of competing in the paralympics. I will be awaiting my invitation to cheer you on. Your mindset is truly admirable, and I see in all that you do, in all that you have harmed is the understanding that everything starts with your own views and believing in yourself. Our school community has been beyond fortunate for your hard work and positive attitude. You're an exceptional role model. This award process has been quite a memorable journey for us. It was my absolute privilege to attend the award gala with you and your family to honor the exceptionally young person that you are to everyone around you every single day. I hope this award will be a long-lived reminder in your life of how much you have to offer, that your value is decided by you alone, how work in your hard times and facing fears teaches valuable lessons, and that there's always an endless list of people here to support you moving forward. Congratulations.
Brayden, would you like to say a few words to speak to your award?
Nah, I'm good.
Thank you. At this time, I would open up the floor to trustees. trustee Becca?
Thank you. Brayden, I am so impressed. I have not heard of this award before, so it's certainly an impressive sounding award. But also, what you're going to do going forward, agreeing to be a program ambassador. First of all, what an opportunity for you. But even more so, what kind of courage does that take to go forward, speaking to other people about your situations and about the program? Others, other young people, students who will benefit from your learning. And I am really glad that you won this award. Thank you very much for being here.
Brayden? As a Calgary police officer, I want to tell you that the chief's awards of any kind are not given out lightly. They are only given to very few recipients. The word courage is a word that is written on our vehicles. And it is a word that embodies a trait that has a ton of meaning. So for you to receive this honor of receiving a youth chief's courage award, kudos to you for everything that you have done and continue to do. And ultimately, being a program ambassador moving forward is honorable. And thank you so very much for everything that you've done for Red Deer Public School Division. It is appreciated and valued on behalf of the Red Deer Public School Board of Trustees. Thank you.
So Brayden, if I understand this right, you won an award and your prizes, we get to do more of them for you. Although my boss doesn't give you awards here for some congratulations. And next, I'd like to call upon Jennifer Pedron, teacher at Central Hill School and organizer of the Heritage Fair, to talk about Tessa Niko, who recently at Provincial Heritage Fair won three awards. And maybe she'll take us to her Friday evening.
I'm going to make Tessa be more talking than I am, so. Okay. I, Jennifer Pedron, and I teach at Central Middle School. I've been running the heritage fair since I came last year. It's a passion of mine to do heritage fair with kids. It allows students to kind of do a deep dive on any topic they want, as long as it's Canadian or family historical, so it could be something personal historically to their family. These are run across Canada, these heritage fair, I guess they're small fairs. And then what happens is, is we invite the provincial head director of history of Canada. And then they come down and they kind of judge all of the projects. And then we choose the top twelve from our schools. We pick six French and six English. And then they go to provincials in Calgary. And then the kids compete there. And I'll let Tessa tell you more about it, but she was able to win three awards at the provincials. So she won overall, she won best thematic, and she won best in science and innovation. So it's a huge tribute to her work and taking this project and really taking something personal. I'll, I won't try and tell you too much about it, and really researching it well. So she didn't just do like textbook work, she interviewed people, she did a deep dive into some other things. I'm super, super passionate about her project. So her passion shone through and people recognized it. From there, she actually, because she won the overall, she's headed to nationals. So she had to do another write-up on her project, more pictures, we sent those in. And then they're posted on a website and you can vote for her now. It's now live, so we will share that out. I think I did share with Erin Black, so you can now vote for her live as well. So there's that competition, but also they will choose the top four, I believe, from Alberta. And those kids will win a $500 R E S P and a trip for two to the national showcase to Ottawa. So she's in the running for that, she's really excited. And I'm going to let you tell her a little bit about projects.
So first, I'd like to thank all the teachers for teaching you throughout the years. I really like learning and this was a really fun learning experience. So my project is about the invention of insulin and how it impacted Canada. It's really close to me because there's a lot of people in my family who have diabetes, my grandma, my great uncle, and my cousin. And had it not been invented, they wouldn't be here today. It was a really challenging but very fun project. I did an interview with my great grandma, or my grandma and my great uncle. And it helped me get a lot of more personal information on my project. This is really important to Canada and its history because Frederick Banting, the inventor of insulin, was the first Canadian to ever receive the Nobel Prize. So it's really a historic moment for all of Canada. And I'm just really grateful for the opportunity to share all my knowledge with all of you guys today.
Thank you very much, Tessa. At this time, I will open up the floor to trustees. trustee Gold?
Oh, she's going to show us something for her.
So, it's really... Was the plaque that I received for the overall award at the, like, overall best project at the provincial showing. And I think it's really beautiful and I'm really proud of it.
Then there is another award that's coming. They're, I haven't told you this yet, but they're coming down to give you your third award because they didn't have it ready. So they're coming to our... I don't hear anyone, so I'm going to...
I don't hear anyone so I'm going to.
Surprise. So I said it's fantastic and more impressive that it's in French, and so finding the language and writing in French is a great challenge. But I love the fact that there's this combination of the great and personal, and then taking that as a theme that gives you the passion and the impetus to do it. So.
Tessa. When I walked into the Heritage Fair Regionals in Calgary and I saw your project, I knew that you should win overall. Your project was absolutely outstanding and well-deserved of the overall. You did an absolutely incredible job, not only on how you represented your project on your tripod, but on how you spoke and presented yourself. On behalf of Red Deer Public School Division, I want to say we are so very proud of you. Having seen you from a very small little girl in Montessori to where you are now, your parents, I know, are so very proud of you, as is Red Deer Public School Division. So thank you so, so very much for everything that you have done and represented in this situation. Keep it all day if you want. You're willing to give it to anybody who wants it.
Tessa, I assume this is relatives, mom and dad? Yeah, I hope I wasn't making too many assumptions. I saw you take adventure, so congratulations, thank you for joining us here. I need to apologize adventure, probably gonna need to take more time off work, which means that I'm on it.
Fighting over who goes.
Doing this again for the national award. Next, I'd like to invite Chris Good and teacher Dan Mills to talk about the esports provincial award that was either received recently run. A little backstory, about two years, three years ago, Principal Good came before the board and asked for permission to take a look at starting an esports academy, esports classes, and poured whole hardly needed support. And in that time, it's amazing, it's grown this quick, that Mr. Mills and previous teachers have brought our students along to start a win, a really difficult championship to do. So I'll let Dan and Chris take over, Doc Wedditt, but kudos, happy lives. There's other schools that have been doing this for a long, long time, so it's been great.
Thanks. Well, first of all, thanks a lot for having us, and I just want to say congratulations to the other people getting recognized today. Wow, I remember Kelsey as a student when I was a vice principal at Central Middle School and making me feel a little old that she's here. And Scott, obviously, taught my kids, just a great teacher. And Brayden, wow, what a great award for you. And Tessa, I'm gonna go back and tell our French immersion teachers and probably our Ivy Science teachers a little bit of your project, and they're gonna be really looking forward to having you at Terreber in a couple of years. Congratulations. But for Terreber, yeah, like Mr. Lawler said, a couple of years ago, we came to the board and asked for permission to start an esports program, and we really saw it was a need in our school, and it's a lot of potential with some of the great students. That program continues to grow every year as a course and also as the extracurriculars. So I'm gonna turn it over to our teacher and coach, Dan Mills, who's here to talk a little bit about their accomplishments.
I'm gonna make sure that Elaine gets recognized for all the hard work she's put in as part of this as well, because absolutely without Elaine, this program would not run the way it does. So, thank you. We're lucky enough that three fifths of our team are here today, the rest are writing final exams, so they couldn't be here. This has been kind of a wild ride for us, because coming out of COVID with esports and then everything's kind of exploding right now in the field. We now have major recognized events that are occurring that industry is actually backing and sponsoring, like the event that we competed in this year, is now the largest in-person esports competition in North America. And we took third, so it's pretty phenomenal. We received special recognition at the event for teamwork and for fair play and sponsorship of other teams due to circumstances that happened at the tournament, and super proud of them, everything they've achieved, and inevitably, everything they're going to achieve, because the journey doesn't end here.
Can I just talk a little about sportsmanship? So a lot of the games at the provincials, the other team that they were playing had technical issues, so they couldn't compete. And they could have just taken the win and moved on, but instead, they actually said, no, let's get it fixed and replay the game, give them an opportunity to play. So, you know, you had a free win and you still let them beat, so I thought that really reflected that kind of values that kind of instill with our students. Congratulations.
Can I please have the students that are here for esports, please stand?
So closest to me is David Henderson and Colton.
And would any of you like to speak to your experience or winning esports? And it's intimidating, so you certainly don't have to. Trustee Beakoff.
Thank you. Well done, students. When this program came to before us for consideration two or three years ago, I was very excited to hear about it. Both my children played, well, they played video games online. Is that why they play esports?
Not necessarily.
And I know how much they enjoyed it, and I know they met a lot of people online, sometimes in different countries, through it. Dan, and is it Elaine or Lane?
Elaine.
Elaine.
That's why I made it Elaine.
Elaine, I'm thrilled to see a woman involved with the program, having a daughter who played online with the gaming and a fair bit. She's certainly been exposed to a lot of negativity, let me say misogyny, but let's go, least of negativity. Dan, when we met here a few months ago with the ATA, you and I talked about gaming, and you spoke about the character aspects of what the students will be learning. Can you provide us with some information on that?
Throw me off the spot. So personally, because of exactly things we were just talking about, gaming has a well-earned reputation for misogyny and toxic interactions. That comes from a long history of things that have occurred without belaboring the point. Personally, I feel very strongly it should have happened, and that it can be better than that. So I don't tolerate that. I push very hard with them to be professional, to be honorable, to be respectful in everything they do, even if other people don't see it. Because, yeah.
Thank you very much, Dan.
It was probably like a year ago, you sent me a link to some of the games that you started to play when the team was really young or new, or you're fairly young. And I remember watching it, it's, what's the game called when you're using the cars to hit the soccer ball?
Rocket League. Rocket League.
Rocket League, okay, yeah, it was Rocket League. So like fifteen games, and they go so fast, and I was watching, and I couldn't get over how fast your reactions were and how you kept it up. And I'm just sitting there sort of staring at the game, old guy, exhausted eyes, and I'm sort of going, I can't even imagine longer. So congratulations, this is really fantastic, and I'm glad to see that it's gone from two years and moving forward into the future. Cool, thank you.
Mention to Colton, so Colton actually is good at using esports for his post-secondary, so he has some offers from universities in the U.S. and Canada to be part of their esports teams, and he's gonna be working, or he's gonna be attending and being part of the esports team at U of C next year.
On behalf of Red Deer Public School Division, I would just want to say thank you. When this was brought forth a few years ago with regards to esports academy and what that looked like, I had never even heard or imagined what it could look like or what it is. I think it's more important when you play anything, whether that be gaming or athletics, it's the sportsmanship and how you actually play. And for you guys to have received the fair play and sportsmanship for teamwork, I think is more commendable than absolutely anything, and it speaks to the importance of how important this character development is in esports. So thank you so very much. Congratulations on winning the provincials, but also on that award of the teamwork and sportsmanship. That is commendable and appreciative of our board to you guys, so thank you.
So Kelly, you're helping dispel that myth that playing video games is a waste of people's time, and yet they go to post-secondary, and my kid's, oh, people earn lots of money doing this, and it's all true. And finally, I'd like to call upon Chris Good and theater arts improv teacher extraordinaire Tara, who's no stranger to this group, has her kids win many shows, win awards, but I'd like to speak about the current group of students and the awards that they recently recognized at the High School Drama Provincials in Lethbridge every career. So, take it away.
Sure, I can go first. So Lindsay Gerber is really proud of our fine arts program. We have a really vibrant, successful program in all parts of the fine arts, sort of the band, music, visual arts, and of course, theater arts. And so, yeah, this is a group Tara, I think, might have the record for the most times she brings students to the board for recognition. We were here earlier this year with the improv crew, and some of them are the same people. And now this is for the actors she does improv and the musical. They should have house or students do the drama, the one-act play festival in the house. We hosted the Zone Festival at Terreber, had a bunch of our plays compete, and then one is selected for a provincial festival, so these students did really well there, and I'll let Tara talk a little bit.
Yeah, we hosted the Zone Festival. We had three of our 12 shows, the Drama 30s direct them. And so we had 12 shows in-house, three advanced to Zones, where they all took home awards. If one more school had been in Zones, we would have set two shows, because the alternate that's not represented in this room, but I just want to give them a shout-out, was The Shape of a Girl directed by Ray Dalstra and starring Hallouka Lameka. It was a one-hour, one-woman show, it was pretty remarkable. Karen Johnson-Dyman was our adjudicator and chose Rune Mullander's show that he directed, Too Much Light Makes the Baby Go Blind, and this is the cast and crew who went to provincials. A huge thank you to Chris Good, the ultimate all arts supporter, Mr. Great, who, so we found out we were going to provincial Saturday night around 10:00 P.M. at awards, and so I was sending lots of text messages, not just to Chris, but to, I just want to shout her out, since this is live streamed, Guardian Angel Who Walks on Earth, Rachel Jenkins, with all due respect, runs Lindsay Gerber and is amazing, and really helped us, all of the office staff really get field trips going, figure out transportation, it was a huge group effort, because provincials were the following Thursday. So we had to arrange this trip for the first time since the 50s, provincials was not held at Red Deer Polytechnic, it moved to the University of Lethbridge. So these students on that trip, first of all, just represented our school so well. We had a few parents help drive things down, and one parent stayed over the first night in the hotel and just remarked to me, I've never seen, this parent has other children with each other and are there for each other as they are so much, but also can make each other accountable, and they can really separate business. These kids were a dream to travel with, and they made our division, our city look so good. They performed to a very rowdy, very boisterous room of about 400 teenagers, a show that relies heavily on audience interaction, and things could have went sideways at any time, and they just, well, Maya Doudal put it well, as she got on stage, she said, we trained you. And they did, they really like held the room in their hand. And at the adjudication, the technical and artistic adjudicator had a lot of praise for these students, just talking about their level of professionalism, the level of difficulty of the piece that they brought. I said to Rune when he chose the show, I think this is the most ambitious thing any high school student has ever directed. He maybe will tell you a bit, but essentially, it was six minutes, but the audience chooses the order the plays are in, and truly kind of leaned on their improv skills. And Rune was recognized at the awards for provincials, but with an honorable mention in artistic design for his show. Also, our acting ensemble received the award for the province of the most outstanding acting ensemble, our technical ensemble received the award for in the province, the most exceptional technical ensemble. Emma, who sang as O Canada today, there were two most outstanding acting awards given in the province, and one of those was different, but hyped. And then also, Joe Litak, he was given the most outstanding stage manager in the province. For people who don't know theater, to call cues for a show that could go in any order at any time, and you go to keep track of 30 potential cues. He was recognized. Our lighting tech for Zones would come with us, so the director just like coolly and calmly stepped into the booth. We had Lexie Fadham join us for provincials for our crew. And then the most prestigious award of provincials is the Golden Wrench Award, which is what the venue technicians, not adjudicators, so this will be U of L technicians of the schools they work with, because every school before you perform is given a 50-minute tech time that morning to set levels, cues, do call, whatever you need to do in the space. Our humans, cast and crew, were given the Golden Wrench Award by those technicians, and that represents a group that they feel like is operating at a professional level, could work in the industry now. This is amazing, because this group of people is all the way from Sweet Leela in grade nine, and like our Elliot in grade 10, like we have students from all grades represented here, and they were also just like wonderful to travel with. The ones that started the party on the dance floor on awards night were lovely, were amazing in the hotel, and just never obnoxious, it's never above them, just so much grace and class, and, yeah, they're, they're, they're great.
Thank you. Can I please have the students that we are recognizing for these awards? Thank you very much. At this time, I will open up the floor to trustees. Trustee Jones.
So I was one of the parents that drove some things down, and when we got, when we got there, I was joking with another parent about Ms. Kent's wage being probably $5 an hour, but then found out that that was a recent conversation that the students were having, and it was less than that. Anyways, it was, it's been quite an awesome season for me. Like, honestly, like I feel like at times that I have learned through, through this group, and really, it's coming from your teacher. And so I've learned some like character building skills at 50-some years old, and I can tell you the truth from that. So learning to fail is the biggest one, and yet we hear it over and over again, but that, honestly, I do believe everyone should probably take it from. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Rachel McCollum.
Again, thank you. As a parent of three kids, two of mine were very, very involved in drama. One was stage manager material, and so got to hear from them, you know, what it was like and how much work it is, so, you know, kudos, thank you. My second is a written word actor and an improv specialist, and now lives up in Edmonton and has put together his own improv company, and is going to be at the Fringe this summer, so he's really looking forward to it. So I don't know if there's a career in this, but there's definitely ways for you guys to do things that, you know, so you can keep showing your love for the arts, and I know their love for it certainly has rubbed off on me. I've been able to do a few cap productions, and so keep up the good work, keep spreading the love for arts and drama in Alberta and wherever you guys decide to go. Thank you very much, Tara, for everything you do.
Trustee Gold.
Yeah, so Ms. Kent, you were talking about these wonderful people's behavior in Lethbridge and the hotel and all that kind of stuff, and I think the best. and the hotel and all that kind of stuff and I think the best, the best thing is that you've learned what acting is and what ensemble work is, right? So you take care of yourself as individuals, so coming to the, coming to the fore with your lines learned, blocking, all that kind of stuff, so you're ready to go. And then you also watch what's going on in the ensemble, so you're taking care of that figure collective, making sure that you're all right, so that for me is like a really moving part of this whole story is the fact that that level of connection to the craft and then as a human being, it's a development of a citizen, right? The idea is I take care of myself, but I take care of the community as well, so yeah, really, really exciting and the Golden Wrench must be like thrilling to one, hey? Yeah, that's like ultimate good and I, we saw the show, the, you know, the long titles, thirty plays, sixty minutes, it was hysterical and moving and exhausting at the same time and how you kept up that energy for all that time and I know that there was a time when you were panicked, next we're not gonna have enough time to get through and to get all the plays done, you were going, oh boy, and you managed to squeeze it out, so a thousand congratulations.
Would any of our Lindsay Thirber drama students like to speak to?
Yeah. I uh, I would like to say. I am so grateful for this opportunity to take on such a big challenge that our school lets us do. When I first chose this show, I knew I wanted a lot of people who have experience with improv, uh, you've probably seen some of these people before, uh, for improv. And I think their dedication and love to this show is what pushed us forward. I, all these people had so many other things to deal with at the time, they, we still had the musical happening while we were rehearsing and a lot of them were in it, uh, whether it be tech or acting. For some people, this is their first time doing scripted acting, um, but they put in so much work and so many hours into this production on top of school work and other extracurriculars that, that love for the show and that love for each other and wanting to bring each other up, uh, it's, it was incredible to work with all these people and they put in so much hard work that when things inevitably went wrong, they were able to just cover for each other and have each other's backs and um, look after each other. And I think the level of trust needed for that and the level of dedication to the craft is really, really um, exceptional. Thank you.
On behalf of Red Deer Public School Division, Tara, how many times have you been here?
Um, I don't, like this.
This year, this term, just since you've been with.
I'm gonna be thinking about that for days.
I ask you that question is because every, I've been here for almost eight and you've been here several, um, and every single time you speak about your students, it is with such conviction and passion and it has not changed from the moment I got here and I don't think it's probably a chance of the moment you started walking in here with your students being recognized. Thank you so very much for everything you have done and thank you so very much to the students for everything that you have done. As Rune, you've met, pointed out, several of you have been here before to be recognized. It is so appreciated that you ultimately represent Red Deer Public School Division the way that you have, Lindsay Thirber, the way that you have. Thank you very, very much. The awards that you have ultimately won are prestigious, the Golden Wrench goes without saying, so thank you on behalf of Red Deer Public School Division, we appreciate you being here today. That's it, right? For recognition? Okay, so what we will do is we will gather in the lobby. I also require the trustee liaison from each school. And that is Glendale, Central, Jay Shaw and Lindsay Thirber to join me out in. I thought I have an assistant. And we will go with uh, Jake Shaw.